All right, reconvene for the AMRI Board of Education here in open session. We were closed and now we're back in open. We'll go first off with our consent agenda items.
And I had the consent agenda item, so I would make a motion we approve those.
Okay, second.
Second.
Aaron, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And there were no community comments signed up, so we'll move right on to our administrative reports.
Yep, we were gonna move up Lisa and...
You think so?
Well...
Now McKee started the show.
Lisa's gonna drive back. You staying at the Camelot? You can, it's probably got vacancy.
Hi, everyone. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So happy for you. You worked so hard and it just went off like textbook. I mean, we talked about it. I mean, just you did everything right and you went by your intuition that, you know, you're gonna add that second question and I was queasy about it, I admit. But congratulations, we had great success across the state. I think it was like eighty percent of the referendums passed. There was very few that didn't, so a lot of support in the state, which is just amazing. So, I congratulate, and congratulations to the new board members. Which ones are the new ones?
They'll take seat next month.
Congratulations, new board member. So, okay, well, I am going to just take the next ten minutes to review very high level how we're gonna finance this. And the reason why I'm here so quickly is because while the great news, you had the referendum pass, the bad news is interest rates, they just keep going up on a daily basis. In fact, Andrew and I were just talking about it even today, another five basis points on the short end and another six or eight basis points on the long end, they just keep going up. So, we are going as fast as we possibly can to get it locked in before rates continue to rise, which I think is what's gonna happen. So, I'm gonna talk about interest rate update, I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the highlights of the financing plan that you as board members really should know, and then a little bit about the timeline. So, the interest rates, which is the next slide. So, what you're looking at here is just a weekly index that comes out every week for municipal bonds, a twenty-year loan. And back when I started at Baird, a week ago, I think I celebrated thirty-four years. So, back when I started at Baird thirty-four years ago, schools were borrowing at seven and eight percent. So, big picture, we're still in a really low interest rate environment. You can see the dash line is where we are today, and we've been under that for quite a bit of chunk of time. It's just in recent years, over the last one or two years, we were issuing debt at one and two percent. You're not gonna see that unfortunately. We've seen a spike again in the last year and we're more, we're closer to the four percent right now. So, again, it's very volatile, it moves on a daily basis within a day, interest rates change all the time. So, we're gonna talk about some of the goals that we have related to that, which is really the next slide. So, the next slide talks about the goals. My number one goal, you guys know this too, is we want to hit what we told taxpayers, the dollar eighty-six. So, as much as we possibly can, we're gonna structure the debt and get and lock in on a day that's good and strong where we can lock, we can follow through with what we told the taxpayers, which was a dollar eighty-six on the mill rate, a hundred and eighty-six dollars on a hundred thousand dollar home. And with the way we have the debt structured right now, I think we're gonna be good to meet that. That's an average over time, so it might be higher in the beginning and lower at the end, but over that twenty-year span of the loan, once we lock in the rate, the goal is to have that average tax impact be that hundred and eighty-six dollars on a hundred thousand dollar home. So, that's my number one goal. Other goals, as we go through the process, minimize interest costs, right? We wanna get the lowest interest for district taxpayers, we wanna minimize interest rate risk, which never really was a bullet point when I'd present this, but today, because of the volatility and the movement in the market, there's a lot of risk. If you hit a day where we're spiking up, like today, I wouldn't sell bonds. I usually don't even, I don't sell bonds on Monday anyway, but that's because there's a lot, usually a lot of movement. So, we're gonna watch that risk of interest rate movement, and we wanna maximize your earnings. So, again, maybe not a bullet point last year because districts were borrowing money and you, you don't spend it all at once, right? You put it in the bank for savings. You, and the bank savings account earnings was point one, point, you know, there was no earnings last year. This year there is. So, you're gonna have earnings on these funds to the tune of anywhere between a half a million to a million and a half dollars. That's super important for you because those earnings can go towards projects. So, you'll end up with more than the total borrowing amount of the forty-three point five, I would have to relook at that again. You're gonna have more than that for projects, you're gonna have the earnings as well. Now, of course, we can use the earnings to offset the tax levy. We haven't hit that yet, but it's always in our back pocket if we need it, 'cause again, we wanna hit that dollar eighty-five. So, those are our goals. And how we accomplish that is through, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit the second part of this right side, which talks about your credit rating. You have a Moody's bond rating of a double A three. So, the chart is there on the bottom left that shows Moody's starts at a triple A. I don't think there are any districts in the state, there might be one or two that are triple A Moody's right now, there's a handful of double A ones, mm, twenty, thirty, double A twos, and you're a double A three. So, great bond rating for a district your size located where you are. You're not a metropolitan suburban district, or would you consider yourself that?
No, we're rural.
Yeah, so you're rural. So, so again, to be in the double A category is a sign of a very well-managed, great job board. Fiscally, everything that you have control of, you're doing a great job. Everything you don't have control of must be going well here, the economy, the unemployment, the growth and development, all those kinds of things. So, we're gonna go back to Moody's again for this borrowing, and we're gonna hope for the double A three bond rating. Just to give you an idea, if you were down into the A one category, which again, for a rural district your size, is a typical bond rating, you would pay about a half a million dollars more in interest cost. So, that one notch up is saving you a half a million dollars in interest cost. Now, if we could get to the double A two, which I don't think we're going to, but we're gonna try, we could save another half million dollars in interest cost. So, bond rating is very important, and it plays into that goal of trying to get the lowest interest, right? The higher the bond rating, the lower the interest cost. Every time you borrow money, we're gonna ask Moody's to stamp a rating on it, and the lenders, it will be more than one, will look at that rating, and the higher you are, the lower interest rate. So, again, great job, and we're gonna try to maintain that double A three. Okay? We talked a little bit about your fund balance, very strong, you've been in that fifteen to seventeen percent range for a while now, and so that, that plays, plays well into that rating as well. So, the repayment structure, that's the third bullet point on the right, is it, is twenty years. So, state statute says you cannot amortize debt for school districts longer than twenty years, so you'll have it paid off in twenty years. And again, that target of a dollar eighty-six. We're gonna look at a two-step process, and we've done this in the past, I'm doing this with all my districts, because doing this type of process hits our goal of investing quickly and getting into the market quickly. So, we're going to, at your May sixteenth board meeting, you're gonna say two resolutions on the agenda. The first is gonna be a construction loan. When we built our home, we did a construction loan, so it's kind of a short-term, six-month note. You borrow the funds and you get them invested as quickly as possible. I was gonna do the math on the per month, but it's gotta be, per month, you've gotta be earning fifty to sixty thousand dollars in interest cost, so we wanna get those funds invested as soon as possible. So, you'll approve a note, a construction loan, that'll be your project money. Then, we will get the bond rating in place, get the paperwork, the documentation, all the reporting, and the notices and the publications, everything we need to do to get the bonds issued right after that, and that's the second resolution. So, the second resolution is going to be a parameters, it's gonna lay out all the bond parameters. Maximum interest rate, payment dates, call date, all the different boilerplate legal things that need to be set up will be in that resolution on May sixteenth. Once we have that resolution adopted by you, the board, we can lock in any day, we can pick the day to lock in interest rates. And that's key to minimizing the risk. So, again, if I'm watching, and we talked about this earlier, is, you know, if I'm watching the market, and Chicago Public Schools has a bond issue in the market on Monday, May seventeenth, or whatever day, I may not bring AMRI to the market because we don't wanna put you up against such an attractive bond issue, and I'm just picking Chicago, I don't know if that's attractive or not, but the idea is, let's find a day, usually Wednesdays or Thursdays are very good. Investors are still interested in buying bonds on Wednesdays and Thursdays, but there's not as many in the market, so I may pick a day. If the feds are meeting on that Wednesday, I'll probably go either Tuesday or Thursday. So, it's just really, we watch, that's two factors of a hundred that we watch to see when the best day is to lock in. So, again, those two resolutions on May sixteenth, the second one will be the resolution lays all the parameters for the bonds, and then again, we can, we can lock in any day. So, that's high level, what we're, what our goals are. We also will have the ability to sell to local banks and local buyers. Sometimes there's community members that are interested in investing in the school district, we have that ability as well, and I know I'm doing that in a couple other districts. So, those are kind of the highlights, the bullet points, and then we go to the fun one, which is the financing plan. So, lots of numbers here, but let me just focus on a couple of things that you as board members really care about, because this is probably version fifty of a hundred. We're gonna keep running this as interest rates change, and we wanna make sure we have the prepayment structure. But again, in those boxes, it's phase one, phase two, it's the construction note and then the bonds. What you really care about is that bottom right box, which says, yep, on this plan, we're hitting the dollar eighty-six. Okay, so you, you always wanna look to that, and that's what I always look at as well. I'm like, okay, where are we with hitting the dollar eighty-six? The other, you know, focal, focal point is gonna be the interest rate on the bonds. Right now, I think it says three ninety-eight, boy, is that small font, but I can read it. It says three ninety-eight. So, we're just at that four percent mark right now. That's a little conservative for today, but again, we probably won't lock in for another six to eight weeks. So, I don't know where we're gonna be then. Okay, so, but once we finalize this, you're gonna get a copy of this plan, and you're gonna see the dollar eighty-six hopefully in the bottom right corner, and then the interest rate as well. So, those are some of the highlights of the plan. Again, it's the two steps, it's a twenty-year bond with a four percent. Still draft, still in draft form. The final slide is walking through the timeline, and this again, is more for administration, but I highlighted board because this is, tonight, we're just having a discussion. You guys have questions, you wanna walk through something, I'm happy to do that. And then on your May sixteenth board meeting, that's when their action will take place for the board to approve the bridge loan, the construction loan, we call it a bond anticipation note, and then approve the parameters resolution. So, there's those two resolutions on May sixteenth, and then all the other work is on us. Are there questions, comments? Anything, Andrew?
So, you're, you are saying that the mill rate may look maybe higher, like in your chart here, for the first few years, then, and then drop off later on. Can you explain briefly why?
Sure, so this is for debt only, so we are fortunate enough to have a little bit of a feel for what the operational mill rate is going to be. So, there's two tax portions to your tax levies, one's the debt and one's the mill rate. Right now, we are higher in the beginning and lower in the end, and it has to do with if we structured the debt any diff, we wanted to minimize that mill rate, which is in the box on the right, we wanna minimize that, but we wanna get to equal payments as soon as possible. So, the pink box shows you that, that's where the equal payments are in the bottom kind of half of the borrowing. In a perfect world, in Lisa Voison's world, I would want that whole column highlighted pink, because equal payments are the best for budgeting purposes, for everything, but I can't, I can't do that, 'cause that brings that first, higher mill rates even higher. So, we kinda tried to find a happy medium between the two, I hope that makes sense. Really has to do with the debt structure.
The only thing I'll add is that, once we do lock in, our company, they'll invest our money for us, that I'll have a better idea of the proceeds that we expect to earn from the investments, and I'll share that with you once I, we get that finalized, so...
Yep, so there's two companies that will invest funds that, this is all they do is invest bond proceeds, and I, I think it's really good that you're looking at both, and both have given us some proposals, and so it's like between a half a million and a million and a half in earnings. I mean, it's a significant amount, so we, we wanna make sure we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's. You may even need a resolution on that.
Yeah, that was probably the only question, is there something we have to do?
Yeah, and probably at the May sixteenth board meeting, you'll have a resolution possibly on that.
Okay.
But they, they do a great job managing those, that amount of dollars, and earning is, according to the draw schedule, because, is it Carl Sanderson?
Yes.
They'll provide a draw schedule, like every month, when they need the funds, and the firm he's talking about will figure out where, can you invest in a CD or a US Treasury note, what's the maximum earnings, but you still have to have those draws available so you can pay Carl Sanderson.
Right.
Anything else? I will be back at the board meeting on the sixteenth, either virtually or here, so that if you guys have other questions that come up between now and then, happy to, to answer those.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
You wanna do that, no?
Well, I mean, that's what we're talking about. The referendum results, that would be great.
Go ahead. Whatever you want to do.
So, these are the referendum results by municipality. Remember, there are two different counties we're dealing with, the first of which, at the top, you'll see, actually, this one isn't sorted in that way. Polk County, there are nine municipalities, and then St. Frey, there are three more. Cylon, Deer Park, that was the very first call that came in on that evening, and they simply, people vote from those two municipalities in the same spot, so that's why that ended up being reported together, and then there was a dash through Deer Park. That's just the way they processed it, and that's the way they reported it, so those are the results. I'm not sure if there are any questions about the results.
I was part of the canvas committee that...
Yep. The, the, the results were canvassed two days after, on Thursday, the seventh of April, and that certification occurred, and that gets shipped off to the state, and then they put that in their hopper there, and note that, passed referendum. It was, first one was fifty-five percent yes, forty-five percent no, approximately, and the second was fifty-six, forty-four. So, both passed.
All right.
Then we could probably go back up to the top and proceed.
Go to the...
Oh, unless you want, unless you wanna do, Linda, first?
What, we've already destroyed the agenda. Just keep doing it, right?
All you visitors, go ahead, Linda.
Well, thanks for having me here today, guys.
Thank you.
All right, can you hear me okay? Most people don't have a hard time hearing me, so... Well, my name is Linda Skoglund, I am with J. Counter Alara, and we are here to give you a brief recap of your renewal negotiations for the 2022-2023 plan year. So, am I clicking, or are you?
I got you.
Okay, all right. I love, three favorite words, I got you. All right, just a quick overview on the plan that's available for the district employees right now. You've got a qualified high deductible health plan available for your employees with a real generous HSA contribution for staff. It's a twenty-eight-hundred-dollar deductible for a single and fifty-six-hundred for family with a contribution into that HSA account of twelve-hundred dollars for a single and twenty-four-hundred for family. Now, they, there is a deductible differential for those that participate in wellness versus those that don't, so the twenty-eight-hundred-dollar deductible is for those that do participate in the wellness program. If they do not qualify and do their, they need to do a health assessment in one activity, then the deductible is higher the file, the year following. So, we've got, got some pretty decent participation in that, and then you'll see on the screen the employee or premium contributions for the two different classes that we have for So, in the, this year, when we received the renewal, we were under a nine percent rate cap agreement with Health Partners, and Health Partners' initial renewal came in at two-point-nine-two percent, and Health Partners did offer another contract extension at a nine percent rate cap for the 2023-2024 plan year at a zero percent. So, I have all really good news for you guys tonight, because I'm not gonna tell you that you got anything more than a zero percent rate increase on anything. So, congratulations to the district, congratulations to the, the leadership team and the employees for participating in the wellness activities and helping keeping rates down. That's big. So, this is just a really quick snapshot of the rate history. You have been enjoying a nine percent rating cap, rate cap for several years with Health Partners, and they have, year after year, the rate calculation has come in under the nine percent, this year, no exception. So, when we look at recommendations for the 2022-2023 plan year, I would recommend that you accept the offer for Health Partners with the flat and the nine, and extend that rate cap another, another year to get that flat rate, that's a zero percent rate impact to the district.
Now, Linda, that previous page, the zero percent comes with a savings to the district, does it not?
Yes.
In that savings?
Yes.
That ninety-four thousand, five-eighty-four, is that that amount?
Yes, yeah, that is, yeah, thank you.
That's gonna be the next slide.
Well, it was on the previous slide, I don't want us to miss it.
Yeah. Sorry, so, so yeah, on this slide, so yeah, that would be, yeah, so under the recommendation slide, so if you go to the recommendation slide, oh, it's not on that one, I'm sorry. So, yes, okay, sorry, I can't see it. Thank you. Yeah, so that's nine, almost ninety-five thousand dollar savings to the district by accepting that, that extension, plus some rate stability, again, with the carrier and a little bit more consistent, you know, it's something more consistent for your staff as well. All right, should we do, and, and so the, sorry, I wanna make sure, yeah, medical plan recommendations. All right, so we, can we go to the health and well-being? Thank you. So, for the health and well-being program, I would also recommend that you continue with Health Partners on that. Again, the employee and their spouse will be invited to participate in the opportunity to keep their deductible at that twenty-eight-hundred-dollar for a single and fifty-six-hundred for family by completing a online health risk assessment, and we're asking this year for them to complete two online health, or two, two activities throughout the year instead of just one, and one of those activities, we're going to encourage people to get, go in for their annual physical exam. So, one of the two would be an annual physical exam that would qualify, and the other would be, will be offering some activities throughout the year for them to be able to participate. So, we'll have some fun with it. The dental plan, the district's contribution of the premium for all full-time employees is eighty-eight percent. Health Partners is again, offering a zero percent rate increase, that's flat, that's no rate change for the second year in a row, leaving the rates flat for three years. So, this is again, a really, really good offer from Health Partners, very, very happy to be able to present that to the board. And then the other lines, all of your other lines, flat, flat, flat. So, no rate increase for the district or for the employees. Again, easy administration for staff and easy for the employees to understand with no changes, so... Any questions at all?
Couldn't get us a discount?
I totally predicted that question. I work really hard to get as much as I can, but in this case, zero is all I could do.
Okay, we'll take it.
In the old healthcare world, I think a known net change is the discount.
Yes, yes.
Certainly compared to where we were 10, 12, 14 years ago, I would say this is, this is a big win.
Huge win. Yeah, I have been here presenting to you 2 to 3 to 400,000 dollar increases versus savings of $94,000, so this is big. And again, this doesn't come without hard work of the, the staff and the leadership to really get people engaged in wellbeing.
Yes. Well, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation for renewal?
I would make the motion to accept this insurance renewal.
And a second?
I will second that.
Aaron, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to be here, I appreciate the opportunity, sir.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. That doesn't mean you can leave yet.
She's like, yeah.
Yeah, right.
She knows. Ah, yeah.
They all say that.
Yes.
Right before they leave.
Yeah. Well, now we'll go back to our administrative reports.
Are you sure?
Why don't we go to the top? Like consent agenda item.
We already did that.
We did that.
We did consent.
Yep, I already, yep, they all did that, so.
Way to stay on track, Keith.
Yeah.
You're good.
I was right, wasn't I?
You were right, you're good.
Dr. D, do you have anything?
Go ahead, Josh.
All right, well, every, every month, you feel like you're getting to the busiest month of the year at the high school, and I'm sure at the other buildings as well. But I know that April and May, as I look at these agendas, truly are the busiest months. And staff meeting this afternoon, and we, we tried to go through everything for the remainder of the year, and the list just kept going on and on of things that we have going on. So it is full on. But just some updates since we last met. As many of you know, that our, our French and Spanish club kids, just, they returned a couple weeks ago and got a few extra days extended on to their vacation after some travel problems getting out of Spain. Stressful at the time, but something that'll make for great stories down the road. It just takes a little bit of time before those stories are laughable for some kids. It's a long time to be away from mom and dad and probably vice versa as well.
A lot of time at the airport.
Yeah, a lot of time at the airport. But the kids are already telling stories about it, so it was a great trip overall, lots of memories. March 29th, we hosted large group music contest at the high school. April 5th, we sent busloads of students to Osceola for solo and ensemble contests, a number of great performances there. We had the end of our third term on April 1st. April 9th, we sent a number of kids to the state forensics competition. This past week, we did our ACT Aspire for 9th and 10th graders on April 13th. That same day, we sent our 11th graders on some college tours. We sent 26 students to Stout, 34 students to UMD, 15 students to the University of Wisconsin River Falls, and 16 students to Northwood Tech. Those universities were based or selected based on their proximity, as well as surveys that we had sent out to students ahead of time as to schools they'd be interested in seeing. So really, really great participation rates in all of those. And a number of those kids, you, you don't know if they're going to get the opportunity under normal circumstances to tour those colleges, so it's a really great thing. A lot of positive feedback from the kids. Future events coming up, this week on April 21st, we are doing our senior exit projects as part of our academic and career planning. So we've built in a half an hour into our day on Thursday. And all the seniors in their warrior times, about 9:45 in the morning, will be giving a PowerPoint presentation to the other kids in their warrior time. Warrior times are made up of students 9th grade through 12th grade. So this is an opportunity for the senior to kind of highlight what has happened through their senior years or throughout their entire high school career, what their future entails, and to try to kind of motivate younger kids and to kind of tell their story. So it's something that we're really proud of, and hopefully the kids will take it very seriously. And to go along with it, we have a special contribution that day. Myron Marco from Holy Donuts is coming in and supplying donuts for all of the warrior times. And we have a little PowerPoint presentation about Myron's story and how he started off as a youth entrepreneur through our program to try to motivate the kids just a little bit, so. Great story there, and Myron is always so wonderful at giving back to our school, so we thank him. Next Monday night, we have fine arts night at the high school. I do believe the concerts start at 7:00, I'll have to double check on that, I'm sure you can find it online. Art displays will be set up long before that. Our art crew is coming in on Sunday to try to get things prepped. And I know you all have been there before, but it's a wonderful night, talent on display, it's, it's just so much fun. It's a great night. We do have one last state test remaining. We have our forward test, that's coming up April 27th. That's just our 10th grade, only two social studies tests, so that's all planned and ready to go. We are two weeks away from prom, April 30th. We'll do the grand march at the high school auditorium. And then prom this year is being held at the Amory Golf Course, and the kids are really excited about that. And they're going to be doing some decorating for that on the 29th. On May 4th, as part of our ACP initiative, we have a presentation for our 10th graders on career opportunities. And when that's over, we're taking a busload of 45 10th graders up to the Pol County Fairgrounds for a career day opportunity there. It was an optional for as many 10th graders as wanted to attend, and 45 signed up for the opportunity. And I know this might shock some of you, but some people just didn't want to miss school, and they wanted to stay back, so we can understand that. May 7th, we're sending a number of kids to state solo and ensemble contest music-wise at Eau Claire. May 11th, another awesome night, we have our senior awards night, and shows everything that's great about our senior class and our community, who is just so generous in all the money that they give to our kids on scholarship night. And then the weeks of May 2nd and May 9th, we have AP testing, and we have a number of kids taking AP tests as well. So that's a lot, we got a lot going on, but we're excited. That's way longer than Tom Benson usually goes, I realize this.
Why is it that you look tired after you just said all that? You're like, I'm exhausted.
Well, at the middle school, we also have kids that just participated in the large group and solo ensembles, and it's really nice to see them out and having a great time with their music. We have middle school track underway, and for a lot of middle school students, it's their first real, real track experience where they're on a team and competing in all the events, and they kind of understand how it all works together towards a team score. They're just practicing and getting ready and just waiting for it to stop snowing so they can actually get out and do it. But they're, they're doing a good job, and we have a lot of, a lot of kids out, and the coaches are doing a great job. Just like Josh, we have the forward test. In our area, they're testing in math, English language arts, science, and social studies, depending on the grade. And we've been at it for about a week and a half. We finished, but we have some kids that are still trying to do some makeups, but we're excited to put some closure on that soon. We have our fine arts show and art show this Thursday, and our choirs start at 6:30 and our bands at 7:30. And then the art is already being put up all over the school. So this Thursday, we encourage you, all the middle school families, to come out and see all the great artwork that these kids have put together and listen to some of the great music. I'm amazed at the talent of some of our kids. It's just amazing, and the, and the teachers that, that have guided them have done a great job. We have spring fling coming up next week. It's our 23rd annual spring fling. It is a fun, kind of a fun time for the kids to, and they compete against each other. The 6th grade almost always wins because they're really motivated, but we'll see. But they're pretty excited for that, and they'll be doing some activities with the pep fest at the end of the day, or, I'm sorry, the end of the week. We, we have kids going to the all skills career day up at the Pol County Fairgrounds as well for 8th grade. And so the 8th graders will be gone. On May 4th, we'll be up for about a half a day experience, learning a lot about the trades and some skills. Some of the kids were, saw some videos and pictures of what they did in previous years, and there's like bobcats that can drive around and try to drop the tire over the cone, and they're super excited for that. I kind of want to go and do that, too. But, and you know, we used to do the college visit day in 8th grade, and we did that at 8th grade for 20 some years. And I think when, with the ACT Aspire and everything, we kind of shifted that up towards the early high school years. And, and that's a good thing, I think, because some of the 8th graders, it was, it was good, but it was maybe a little too early. So we're really excited about this career day, and then bringing speakers into to talk about colleges and understanding the difference between, you know, maybe a four-year school, a two-year school, the military, and a lot of the options they have, so they understand that. But I remember I had a, I was at a graduation about maybe seven or eight years ago, and I had a student that went up to me and they said, you know, I had never seen the college campus before until I took that trip, and I'm really excited now because I'm enrolling, and I think they were actually going to a nominee. But they said, I had never even seen one, I had no idea what to expect, and they were so excited. And you don't always think about that, of just those simple little, even just an exposure to something that maybe is not part of something that they've seen, and the difference that can make and the motivation it can make. So real excited about all of these different things, because if we can turn, everyone has something that turns them on, so we can get to them all the different careers and areas, and hopefully they all can kind of find a niche as they move forward. So all really, really cool things. And we have a lot of teachers working really hard on that, and I'm proud of them. We have some field trips coming up in our, in our middle school, too. The two that are coming up immediately, the 7th grade does a courthouse field trip. So they go up and they take a look at the local government. They tour not only the, they actually get to go in and watch a court hearing, and then they get to meet and look at what our courthouse is like. They get to look at the, in the past, they've looked at the jail and understood some of those types of things. And then they come back and look more at some of the city government pieces and meet with the mayor and some of the people here. We've also put in, in addition to going over to take a look at the museum, the Pol County Museum, they've opened up so we can spread some of those kids out, so when somewhere in the court, some can go over and look at the museum in Balsam Lake. So that's going to be a pretty neat trip, and that's coming up on May 9th. I have 6th grade going on one later in May, and I'll touch on that later. 8th grade is on that career trip. We have the Amory Middle School Genius Hour Expo coming up on May 13th. And I think I kind of explained that a little bit, but you know, that's kind of where they get their passion project, they can work on and research whatever they want, present on it. And so that, we'll have a Genius Hour Expo from 9:00 to 11:40 that, that following day, and we'll be sending out more information to parents so that they can come and kind of see what their, their child's worked on and what some of the other kids have worked on. And then 8th grade has a youth jam that follows that, the 8th grade youth jam, it's kind of like a graduation party, and they go over to Jorgensen Field, and there's some games and food and just some kind of activities that they do out there. And it's kind of like, like I said, a, a closure for their time, so we're excited for that. So there's a lot going on at the middle school as well. Any questions?
First of all, if you want to run a skid steer, I've got an offer for you.
In a parking lot, it'd be the best.
Yeah, I'm not thinking parking lot. And you know, both of you touching on the exposure to the, the college campuses or our tech schools, and it seems like they used to offer a lot more things for kids to come down and like partake in, in the day. They don't seem to do so much of that anymore, so having those trips scheduled and, and that, it made me think of, I always knew that I wanted to be in education and I, but I never knew what a college campus looked like either until I got that experience to go either with the, you know, a dairy judging team to, to be able to go see UWRF or, never, never knew what that would be like, especially coming from a very rural area and with parents that didn't, didn't value education. And for being the only person in my, in my family to ever having gone to any kind of upper post-secondary education, it was life-changing for me to be able to see that. And so the opportunity that we provide for these kids is really immeasurable.
And as Northwoods was at WITC, right? Yeah, we, we brought a student up to, some students up to WITC or Northwoods, and there was another kid that came out of there, and they, they said, oh, I always kind of wanted to be an auto mechanic, but then they saw the auto body and how they, you know, really work on those, and I've never seen a kid so excited about auto body in, in the tech areas. And again, they just walk through and look at all the programs, and then sometimes it only takes 15 minutes, but just the, just that spark is all it takes. So it was really neat, yeah, I agree.
It is. It's a, it's an invaluable, immeasurable tool to get kids any kind of post-secondary education for any, any, a trade, a four-year university, either one. It's, and you need, you need those trade building schools, too.
For sure.
And that's, even if you're just going to go into that workforce, just to have those two years or a year or a certificate greatly expands your chance of getting hired to get into that, into those jobs. It's, it's amazing what that can do for a kid and their focus of where they want to go, so.
Thanks.
Intermediate school is just as busy as the high school and the middle school. Our English, our English language arts adoption with the intermediate and the elementary is still ongoing. March 31st, Teresa Stanley of CSA 11 came and met with teachers by grade level and had just reviewed our rubric, had gone over the ins and outs that we had established and really allowed teachers an opportunity to talk and discuss what they felt like the strengths or maybe some areas that we would need to supplement. So we are nearing a decision. Hopefully in the near future, we, we will identify which ELA curriculum we will propose moving forward with. Fastbridge FACS, a series of professional development opportunities has been offered for elementary and intermediate school teachers focusing on fastbridge. Carrie Shu, our wonderful district reading specialist, has offered these professional development opportunities for our teachers, and it has really strengthened their abilities with fastbridge, so I want to thank her for that. Kathy Vincent has been coming over to the intermediate school from the middle school. She's been working with our 4th grade students in enrichment math, so really expanding their learning. And she is also coaching a group of 5th grade math students who will compete at the Math Masters Competition in Hammond on April 22nd, so that's quickly approaching. So thank you to Kathy for coming over and supporting our 4th and 5th grade students in their love of math. A group of intermediate school staff recently completed a book study on the book called Hacking a School Discipline that was led by our school counselor, Mr. Mylan Archeck. It's a book that focuses on restorative practices. They met once a month to discuss that month, that, that chapter and to review any takeaways or discuss how some of those ideas could be implemented here. I'm very proud to share that a lot of what they had mentioned, such as fostering relationships, is something that we already do do. PBIS ropes course, over the last two weeks, our gym has been set up with a very fun and engaging ropes course. So it is part of the PE unit, but it also was built in as a PBIS reward. It was very fun to watch the students enjoy that. The forward exam, as Tom just shared, the middle school, they're wrapping up, we are on week two of our forward exam. COVID has thrown a little bit of a wrench just in having us making up some testing dates with students. So like Tom had shared, based on what grade level they're in is the number of tests that you would have to take. So ours will finish the end of this week. We'll hopefully carry it not too far into next week, but we, we will have some makeup tests that we'll have to do. April 7th, we had an art fair, so within our hallways, Mr. Olson and Mrs. Anderson had student artwork up and available, and families were able to walk around the school and, and see their children's projects. We are putting the finding, finishing touches on our transition from a targeted title program to a school-wide program. We just completed our action plan. We have our, our documents ready to submit, and I would anticipate we'll be submitting those within the next few days to the DPI. 4th grade concert happened on April 14th, that was at the high school auditorium. So 4th grade students, I have one of my own, worked very hard with a recorder and a kazoo in songs, and it was very fun and entertaining. But I'm, I'm ready for hot cross buns to be done in our house, as is possibly Mr. Durfler. I'm ready to put the recorder away. And actually, band sign up is happening tonight, so when our household, we're just transitioning to a new instrument, which I saw your voice, so you probably are as well.
Accordia.
Not accordion, no, trombone. And finally, thank you to the IPO, so they had given us a wonderful sum of money that will help offset student field trips this year, so I want to thank them for that. Some upcoming events, band sign up again was tonight. 5th grade students will compete in math masters. Fifth grade students will compete in Math Masters in Hammond on the twenty-second. Fifth grade will also have a virtual planetarium field trip. April twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh, the Amory's Women's Club will be coming to the intermediate school and presenting different Earth Day programs to different grade levels. Fifth grade will participate in a music festival in Unity on April twenty-sixth. April twenty-eighth, the third grade will be taking a field trip to Crystal Cave, and then April twenty-ninth, there is no, no school. It'll be staff in service. So very busy month for us as well. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, the elementary school, there are so many dates that have been thrown out this evening. I just want to remind everybody that we have a wonderful website that lists all those dates and a wonderful communications director, Tracy Hendrickson, does a great job at highlighting all the fun things that are happening in the next couple of months at our schools. I'm going to highlight just five things that are taking place, upcoming things at the elementary school. First of all, the very last Parents' Partners Meeting is going to be held on April twenty-eighth. And we have two guests, well, actually, three guest speakers. Number one is our brand-new Paula Johnson, elementary principal, will be introduced at that meeting, and Paula is also here this evening. So she is a guest speaker along with Annie Brayton, and who is our media specialist at the elementary school, and Amy Stormberg, who is the director of the Amory Public Library. Excuse me, they are going to, you know what? Correction there, that was the old director. Amy Doherty is the Youth Services Librarian. And Amy and Annie are going to present to the parents the summer reading program. We're going to be working in collaboration with the Amory Public Library, which is so exciting. It'll give our students the opportunity to get down and see that brand, beautiful, brand-new library. In addition, we do plan on taking our kindergarten through third-grade students to the new facility and experience it, especially the children's area. With summer coming up, we're hoping that they will take advantage of the many wonderful things that are taking place there. We also have Track and Field Day coming up. Make sure that families are participating or being spectators at that event at the end of May. And we will be hosting the last day of school cookout for everybody, parents and students alike. And Mr. John McBride is here. I'm sure he's very excited to experience that. We feed over eight hundred people for that event, so it's very, very fun. Piece of cake for him. I know he's done this a lot.
I have a feeling he'll knock that out of the park.
He will knock it out of the park, I'm sure. I'm sure. And the last thing I just want to mention on the school calendar, on May thirteenth, it says 4K orientation. We are not holding 4K orientation in the spring. We are going to do it in the fall. Brand-new format, and it's going to be on August twenty-ninth and August thirtieth, and additional information will be sent home to families. So I just want to make sure that families know that 4K is the orientation, is not taking place, and we will have 4K and kindergarten on that day. On the school calendar, it says there will not be class for those students. We will make sure we announce that in many different ways as well. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
All right. Well, no matter what year or what time of year, there is an accompanying DPI indicator around the world of special ed compliance. So this, this time of the year is Indicator Eight. For those keeping track, that's a family engagement survey. It's currently open. If you are a parent in the district that has a student with a disability that has an IEP, you have received an email, if you have one, listed in Power School. And it's about a twenty-question survey just around, you know, what we do to communicate with those parents, their perceptions of the school district of Amory and how their sons and daughters are being supported in terms of their IEP and school engagement. So for those, just got a couple, a couple, not many, feedback. Yes, this is legitimate communication coming from the school district of Amory through DPI on this survey. And so we're sitting at about seventeen surveys, and our goal is only to get to twenty as far as compliance indicator, but we hope to get a lot more. It's open through June thirtieth. Mental health collaboration, that's just kind of been a standing agenda item on our updates. Where we're at, we're taking the list that we have posted on our People's Services website, and now counselors, teams of counselors, and in conjunction with the Student Success Coordinators are contacting those counseling agencies, those providers, and really starting to engage in conversations around what is your capacity for either providing direct services, professional development, engaging with the school district in ways that we can support kids or staff members with wellness and mental health. So this is kind of, it takes a lot of groundwork, and I feel like I've been, this has been on the agenda, but, you know, it's a really important piece to this is to communicate out and to be intentional and to go into these conversations with enough time and to really give each agency space to really think about what they want to provide and what they're able to. So we'll be looking forward to hearing, you're going to certainly hear more about this in the near future. Transition readiness grant, I was pleased to hear all the awesome activities going on at the high school and middle school around post-secondary education. We are looking this year to apply for a transition readiness grant. This is related to supporting successful transition from high school to the work world, whether that's on-the-job training, just an entry-level employment situation, or post-secondary education. The minimum grant request is twenty-five thousand dollars. It goes all the way up to a hundred thousand dollars. So it's a substantial amount of funding that will help us provide some resources to kids. And a lot of what the data indicates in terms of our Indicator fourteen says that, you know, we have, you know, fifty, sixty percent of kids that may be engaged in employment or at post-secondary education. We have kids, too, that are out a year and they haven't found gainful employment, or at least they're not recording it on our survey. So one of the things that we want to do is really try to give them more hands-on opportunities and support through their special education teacher when they're seniors in high school to make sure that they're getting out. We do a lot of vocational training already. The purpose of this grant would give us another person, another ability to help case-manage some of those kids that are actually in those hands-on experiences out in the community. So, yeah, it's all about getting more experience. We often know your first job isn't going to be your last job, but if you can be closer with those first couple of jobs that you get out of school to being something within your wheelhouse of employment, that's a good thing. So excited about that transition readiness grant. Last week, we had our last PK through twelve Special Ed, Professional Learning Community. And really, one of the things we've been doing is updating our tools and curriculum, making sure that, you know, what we have that we're using is quality, it's in place, it's being supported, it's making our list. So much of our curriculum nowadays is online or has some sort of annual subscription fee. And, you know, I don't know about you, but it's kind of like that Hulu subscription, right? You've been paying eight dollars for for the past twenty-four months, and you somehow now realize that I haven't watched Hulu in two years. So that's important to do with these, like, trusty, a lot of this stuff costs more than eight dollars a month, which is why we need to really keep tabs on it and track it. So those are the updates that I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Go ahead. And you have anything?
I do not.
You don't? You're going to come though. So now we'll talk to you. We kind of shucked you down the road there with moving the other two up, and you were probably thinking, why don't I get moved up?
No, I liked hearing about the referendums.
Yes.
That's all good. Old eyes. All right. And then I can't see those. So thank you. And this is our annual Clubhouse update. So we are, as always, completely, fully staffed for the space that we have. So zero to two is sixteen, sixteen, two to three, age three to four is twenty-four kiddos. Before and after school, right now, we have a hundred and fifteen children enrolled for a total enrollment of a hundred and seventy-one kids. Not all of them come every day for the school-age kids, but it's a pretty, pretty fair amount, so. Current waitlist, this is actually not accurate because I've had a bunch of more come in since I did this PowerPoint on Wednesday. So we actually have seven in the zero to two, two to three is at ten, and three to four is also at ten. And age four is still at three. So I will be able to move ten of those kiddos from the waitlist to a classroom once school lets out. And I'm going to max out, we're going to be using the Stop and Think Room for the summer since the school, summer school doesn't use it. And I'm going to max out our four-year-old group to seventeen to twenty children, just depending on how many are three and how many are four, by using one of my college girls that's going to be home for the summer as the second person. So that will help alleviate some childcare needs for some families. And then we will have openings again on September fifth, when the 4K students go. But then I will have no openings until June of twenty twenty-three at this point. So. Next slide. So people have asked me, the referendum's passed, so now what? Are you going to be able to take more kids right away? Unfortunately, as, you know, it takes time. So class numbers due to our space will have to stay the way they are until we are in a bigger space. But once we are in our new space, we'll immediately be able to add seventeen more children without even adding another staff person. So larger classrooms also are going to mean that there's more space for children to spread out, to engage in their play, which is going to lead to less behaviors. You're going to have less biting, less pushing. You have those two-year-olds who think that every toy that they've ever looked at is still theirs. So hopefully, it will alleviate some of those concerns. And there's still room for expanding our numbers of children without actually adding more space. I could say divide the infant room with a, you know, temporary divider and have, we would have to hire another staff person, but then we'd have four more infants. So it's just depending on what the needs are. But it is nice to know that we could, without even adding anything else, just add one or two more staff people and be able to take more children.
What about the Young Star rating? You've noted that.
Oh, yes. Childcare, we will finally be able to apply to get a four or five-star rating. Our space has held us at a three this whole time. We're just not, we can't pass the Eckers and the Itters. So with a four-star rating, we would actually receive higher Wisconsin shares payments for low-income families, and those families would also receive more for attending a four-star center. And again, it goes up if you get to a five. So that will be very beneficial for families as well as for us.
Will the new addition avail you to a five-star?
Yeah. The five-star is going to depend more on, the, the space will get us to a four. But the five-stars, it's, it's tough. It's going to take some extra staff training, extra staff education. It'll be an investment, but we can get there. So that'll just be staff, investing in staff time and, you know, we may have to do a Saturday all-day training or something, so. But I know the girls would be more than happy to put in the work. So our future is very bright. Summer Clubhouse is now at ninety-two children already enrolled. Our max that we take is usually a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen. The program's going to run from June seventh through the nineteenth of August. And believe it or not, I already have people enrolled for before and after school for next year. We went to an online enrollment system, so people are, they noticed that it doesn't have an end date. So they have already signed up. Because of the waitlist that I have infants coming in, we will be full, completely full in the childcare through May of twenty twenty-four. So, which is good. Surprisingly, we've had, I think, I'm sure you've noticed, minimal turnover in Clubhouse this year compared to previous years. Partially, well, I actually said a lot, probably has to do with the raises received in January, thanks to our participating in DCF's Child Count Stabilization Payment Program. And that money would be higher if we were a four-star. So it, it affects the funds coming in through DCF as well. And that program runs at, right now, it's running for eighteen months. So we'll be able to get that for a while. All staff are required to have twenty-five hours of continuing education in the early childhood field, whether they're taking classes at WITC, I do a training with them, things they go to on their own. But just, I want everyone to be aware that there are requirements for them as well for their continuing education. They have, if you come in with no background in early childhood, they do have six months to take the Intro to Childcare class. We usually do it through Northwoods Tech. And lead teachers have to have at least two of those classes. So we prefer a two-year degree at least, and we need at least half of our staff to have a two-year degree or higher, our lead teachers, for that four-star rating. So, and the director has to be a thirteen or higher for a Young Star rating, so. And I just want to end by saying thank you from the bottom of my heart to everyone who's ever been a part of Clubhouse, worked for Clubhouse, supported us in any way, shape or form. Being able to work with children and watch them learn and grow at such a critical developmental stage is amazing. And we couldn't do the work we do without the support from everyone. And just from all my staff and myself, thank you for allowing us to do it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have, I have a question. So you said the program, the summer program runs until August nineteenth. Is there then a week off or something for everyone?
There is. And the reason is, and I've had parents ask about that, most of our staff are college kids for that program, and they're all going back to college. So it has to do with ratios. I just don't have, and then all the teachers are coming back to work. So I have all their kids coming back, and I just don't have enough staff to safely, yeah, I'd have to pick and choose who could come, and that just doesn't feel right. So.
And then my other question is, and I don't know if this is your question, or what does it look like for timeline as far as these classrooms? Are we thinking that they're not going to be open until next summer?
Hold that thought until May. That's when Cross-Anderson and LHP will have their timeline for you. And then you'll know a lot more.
I don't really expect it to be done by this fall, but, you know, obviously, the sooner the better, but.
The sooner the better, on all things, but there's a timeline.
Yeah. And I'll make sure, all parents on the waitlist, anyone who's waiting will know, I mean, the day we can, after we move in, there will be more kids in those rooms. There won't, it'll be immediate, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go back to our informational items, and we'll go to the first reading of the changes to handbooks.
Okay, Becky's going to put up the Certified Staff Compensation and Benefits Document. And you will see the first item is the change of date, so that's sort of immaterial, that's just moving things forward. The first item, that's significant change, is the salary increase. This has been in the offing for two years. We started talking about this with their advisory committee of some twenty certified staff about two years ago in regards to, let's see what we can do to move our salary forward over a three-year span. Last year was growth year one. This is growth year two, and then we'll examine what growth year three looks like when we get out to next year. So all the yellow down the middle of that first page is all what that growth would look like. One of the big differences is the I-level. Last year did not grow, and this year it does. So this is the first item of change. You might be asking, and I'll just answer the question before you ask it, what is that cost? The cost of moving this forward is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Now, I can't say that with, with any kind of exactitude because we haven't hired all the positions yet. There are still positions being hired right now. We don't know who they're going to be or where their salary will be. But the approximate cost is a hundred and twenty-two thousand increase in the scale. So that's the first change. If you have any questions at any point, just chime in, and I'll do my best to answer. The second, this is more for the PDH guide than it is for this document, but it's a point of emphasis. Book studies will have a PDH cap of ten. The reason we wanted that is we wanted to make sure that there was some equity in the PDH for book studies, a college credit, one. A college credit, one college credit will give you 15, so we wanted to make sure that we didn't go much higher than 10, because college credits should carry with it a greater total of PDH. Uh, we are increasing, with your permission here, over the next two months, the number of PDH a teacher would get for hosting a student-teacher. We're in the business of hiring student-teachers. We've hired quite a few student-teachers here in the last two years. Sort of a snapshot into who they are as an educator, and you might get a good one, and we can grab them, and we've done that almost a half dozen times here in the last two years. So that will increase. If you move further along in the document, uh, there's a word change here. It used to say Amory Regional Medical Center. A, that isn't their name anymore, but we simply changed it to medical provider of their choice. If a health examination is necessary, um, then they could choose their provider. They don't have to do it here in Amory. And then we moved down quite a ways into the leave section, uh, personal days, sick days. And I'll walk through this with you, and you certainly can ask questions if you have any. The portion in yellow, obviously, is the changed portion. Uh, we have had quite a few issues here, uh, this year particularly with the number of employees gone, certified staff employees gone, um, on days before and after breaks. Spring break is the most prevalently used day. So what the change in verbiage says, and I'll read it to you, that paragraph, "Not more than seven employees shall take personal leave or a PDH day trade." If you have 20 PDH, you can trade it for a day. On any one day, it can be gone. "In the event that more than seven teachers," we changed it to certified staff, "request personal leave on that same day. The first seven requests shall be honored." What it used to say is, there's a period where it's, uh, seniority rule, and then there's a period where it's first come, first served. So what we've changed it to is, on a first come, first served basis, starting on July 1. The reason July 1 is a significant day is because you don't have your day as credited to you until July 1. So right at the end of the year, you typically have zero. "At 8:00 AM, staff submitting a personal leave request during the summer for the upcoming school year must deliver their paperwork to the district office in person. All requests beyond the 7th will be denied." So if you're a person submitting a personal day request, name your day, you're the eighth or more person, it, it is denied. You can't use a personal day on that day. "Personal days and PDH day trades will not be granted for the day before or the day after the following scheduled breaks, Christmas break, Easter break, spring break. Vacations should, should take place during scheduled breaks on the school calendar or during summer." Uh, "Personal days and PDH day trades cannot be used on the day of a parent-teacher conference." It's nearly impossible to replicate the experience of a parent-teacher conference. They're expecting all of their teachers would be there, and if folks are using personal days on those days, it makes it very hard for parents to get a progress update. Please note that Thanksgiving is not included here. Thanksgiving break, culturally where we live, Thanksgiving break means deer hunting, and there are folks that submit deer hunting requests way back in the summer every year. Some have done it for every year that I've been here, and then they've been here. So we simply excluded that. And then the language that mirrors this for sick days is a little further down, and it reads, "Staff may use sick days if they're ill, injured, or need to attend to a medical condition for themselves or a family member. Sick days cannot be used in lieu of a personal day to extend a vacation." You can't declare, "I'm sick," and then use that to extend a vacation. First of all, it would be difficult for one to believe that they knew when they were going to be sick in the future. And further, you're not on vacation, you're sick, so you ought not code that, uh, in lieu of a personal day. "Sick days on the day before Christmas break, spring break, or Easter break must be accompanied by a doctor's note. Sick days used on the day of a parent-teacher conference is also must be accompanied by a doctor's note." Here's this, the reason that this is here. If we cap seven as the personal days, and going beyond seven, they're going to get denied. I'm, I'm here to tell you, based on experience, what exactly is going to happen, is they'll simply declare that they were sick, and at that point, we'll have people gone, and we'll know full well, they're not on vacation, they're not really, they're not really sick, they're on vacation. And it's just becomes an improper use of days. And some folks have chosen to do that already this year. It happened a couple of times around spring break, and we've already got some folks that are doing it around the April 29th day here for Wellness Day. So it just gets difficult. So this, um, bottles it up and makes it clear as to what our expectations are. The district's philosophy is, in essence, this. We want teachers here when kids are here. And if you're not, and your days are not being used in the way that, uh, they ought to be used, it, in essence, is a breach of contract, and we don't want people to do that. It's not prevalent, but it's happening, and it gets very difficult for the district office and for the administrative team to be able to monitor who's where. The last item of change, and then I'll take questions or feedback. Employees who have depleted all forms of leave time and do not come to work will be subject to termination unless formally granted leave without pay through the district. There are folks who are out of days and, um, are not here. That's a breach of contract in and of itself, because you are contracted for X days, and if you're not here and you don't have days to not be here, then, uh, you can't be here, basically. So, questions, and I'll do my best, or comments, certainly.
Well, I, um, I kind of hate to, um, leave this with that discussion. It's kind of a, a bad taste, I think, for everybody. Dale and I sat through the meetings that, uh, we had prior to this, and, um, we have really good staff here, and we, we value our staff here, and we value that, that people are in front of our kids here. Having this conversation in and of itself of salary and what that financial impact will be to the district as we move through the salary schedule, um, I think, I can speak for the board as a whole, is a, is a showing of our appreciation of the staff that we have here. So I guess as a, as a board member to hear that's kind of some of the stuff took place and that we had to resort back to this kind of language in a very formal, very laid-out situation, is a little disheartening in that regard. And I hope that having this language, it may seem, uh, I don't know, maybe trivial or, um, something, but there was good reasons why this had to be done, and, and I, I guess, disheartened that, that we had to spell it out like this, but, um, hopefully going forward, this will curb some problems and, and maybe we'll be able to, to, um, change this back eventually. But, um, knowing that this discussion is really centered around showing the value of our employees and, um, trying to do what's best for the district to retain our employees that are really good and that we appreciate. So it's really with the bulk of these, this discussion centers around, rather than just this tiny bit of personal day language.
Yeah, you know, probably a few comments here don't necessarily, um, you know, apply to most staff members. I would, it sounded like maybe a small, small group. So, um, yeah, maybe a little unfortunate, but it, it's fair for everybody, I think, so.
I think so. I, you know, just talking about it in, in our, um, pre-meeting to this, um, for the rest of the board members who obviously weren't there, um, if this kind of leaves a bad taste to, to the rest of you, there was reasons why that had to happen, and I think, being a big reason that we want to keep our, our staff in front of our, in front of our students is a, is a huge thing, so, um, that's why that language, I think, has been spelled out a little bit more clearly.
I'd like to make note of the first page. If you could go back to that page for me, Becky. The first page is that salary growth, growth page. Please note that all of this is budgeted dollars that comes from our budget. There is a narrative, and I'm going to try and nip it in the bud, so to speak, prior to it occurring. This is not a straight line. We passed the referendum. Now you're doing a salary increase for certified staff. Those are two totally different things, two totally different, uh, sets of money. So this is a budgeted expense, not a referendum expense.
Yeah, I think this, um, certified staff salary schedule goes back to, um, we kind of started in this format a few years ago. We did this proposed three-year plan last year, at the same time last year.
You did.
Um, that was a, a $157,000 increase if we did nothing. It was a budgeted expense, and if we adopted it, it was an $81,300 increase. Last year, that moved this, to this year, that, that was, this is just the, through, um, moving through the columns from the 2021, 2022 proposed increases to the 2022, 2023 increase column now. So that is, uh, this is nothing new from any of that. This is the continuation on of what we started last year.
This is the price of doing business in today's education. If you're not going to pay folks, you're not going to hire anyone, and you're not going to keep anyone, because the applicant pools are very shallow right now.
And, I mean, honestly, you know, not that we can, you know, change it all, but, I mean, what, you're paying an entry-level, uh, teacher, uh, who's graduated from college with a, you know, a degree. I mean, this is, and we've had it happen here, where, you know, people have taught and said, "I can, you know, I can make twice, three times as much doing other things with my four-year degree." So, you know, I really wish that, you know, across the states, we were paying more for teachers, but because they put in a lot of time and a lot of work, and they, they've already, you know, gotten their four-year degree, and, so anyway, I just think that this is, um, certainly, um, it's worth this salary increase. Really, they're worth a lot more than that, but this is at least one small step we can do. I still don't know if you're going to be making as much as you'd be making at Menards, but, you know.
I don't know.
Um, and, uh, in this plan, I didn't see any changes made to retirement HRA accounts that was discussed.
Nope. Uh-oh. We had lots of conversation about retirement in the two systems. There is a pre-2004 group and then a post-2004 group, prior to my time and the time of many folks that are currently employed here. So we're going to put together a subcommittee of folks, and we're going to start exploring that in the fall, and we're going to get, uh, perhaps J.A. Counter to help us with that conversation, too. We didn't want to make a quick decision and then make a regrettable decision, where folks really had to make an uninformed decision. So we'll make sure everyone knows what's going on before any changes are made, and then everyone's informed about what the decision at hand is, and maybe no changes are made. That's for the fall.
And obviously, we had a good report with that tonight.
Yeah.
With the, with the, um, insurance benefits there. So that was great.
Yes.
Okay, a win for the district there.
The second item is, you don't have to take action on any of these. This is about a first reading. The second item is the Certified Staff Handbook. In the handbook is a lot of name changes. We don't, we don't know what this looks like yet, because we have to reorganize in May, and then there are some name changes below, new people in and old people out, and that is the only change here. So there's nothing really to discuss on that one. The second, or the third item is the Support Staff Compensation and Benefits Document. And you'll see a lot of yellow here, following the date changes at the top there. Uh, the last time this scale was changed was 2018, 2019. For bus drivers, the scale has been the same as long as pretty much anyone can remember. This is my 16th year here. It's longer than that. Twyla, Becky, and I have had conversation, and Andy as well. None of us can remember the last time the bus driver scale was changed, so you'll see that below this. So the changes that you'll see here, uh, the far-left column should also be highlighted in yellow. That's the Clubhouse. Uh, that change occurred way back in January when we received the grant from the DCF. So the groups, in essence, are now paras, food service, custodial, and clubhouse is one group, secretarial's a group, and then mechanic and computer technician, uh, mirror each other for most of the scale, and then lastly, van driver. So this is an increase, um, across the board for salaries. The total amount of increase above the actual normal movement is $200,000 approximately, because, again, we don't know who's going to be here next year. It's impossible to know that for sure. People are coming and going. But if you miss the mark, uh, in what Nina said, she has not had any turnover since January 1st. I, I don't think you can, I don't think you can conclude anything other than a huge factor in that with salary increase. These salaries, as they are presently listed, are pretty abysmal. Moving this forward is, again, the price of doing business. We're not going to get and keep anyone, keeping our entry-level wages at $12 and $13 and $14 an hour. It's just not going to happen. So this is the first of the changes that are in this, um, uh, document. I'm not sure if you wanted to talk about salary growth now and then continue on, and I'll open it up to you if you do.
Um, I guess I do still have some lingering concerns on...
Okay.
The custodials, um, because they're lumped in this group, and because, um, I believe the secretaries and the bus mechanics got a step increase way, way, way back before you, and probably before Jim, I think.
Six years ago is when that cycle stopped. I don't want to cut you off, but here's what occurred.
That's okay.
What, what district administration did was, they put it on a rotation. So this year, the paras moved forward, the next year, food service moved forward, the next year, custodial moved forward. The last group to move forward before Steve Scheel resigned his position here was custodial. So custodial has been ahead of the other groups since 2016. That's how that occurred. So now they're with the other three groups once again. So that's how that discrepancy happened.
And I, I think we talked about that at the, at the, um, kind of the meeting that we had pre-game here, I guess. Um, but we have custodians who are, have been here a long time, and with this moving forward, they're going to get like a, I haven't done the hard math on it, but like a 64 cent, I don't remember what.
Well, I mean, yeah, they could potentially, some of these, you know, cells, they could potentially...
Go backwards.
Go backwards.
Well, we won't let anyone go backwards. They will, they will stay on their present wage. We won't let anybody go in reverse.
In effect, by not going backwards, they're going to stay right where they're at.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which, you know, um, doesn't get them much, doesn't get them anything.
Sure.
Um, I don't know, this just seems kind of a little harsh.
It does, and I, and I, and I will say this, that, I mean, and this is the two, the double-edged sword that I feel that we're all going to, I mean, incur. I mean, that we do have members of our community who, um, are homeowners, and their taxes are going to go up, too, and then they also work for the district, their taxes are going to go up because of their referendum, and then they also work for the district, and then they're not getting any more money either, which I understand, that's a kind of a double-dip in kind of a thing. We're all not going to be in that same boat, but, um, for them to, to not be recognized for their years in, and like we said, we're trying to retain people, and we do have custodians in this district that go above and beyond the responsibilities that they have of securing the buildings, of, uh, making sure the sidewalks are salted, sanded, to extra, um, responsibilities when we have games in the district, um, no matter what school we're at. Plus, they have to get all the rest of their work done, too. Well, I think I've said this over the years that I've sat here, that custodians are kind of an unsung hero of the district, and I, this just, kind of just still leaves a bad taste in my mouth. And I'm not saying that we need to maybe increase salaries across the board, but I would like to maybe consider looking at people that have been here on a longevity basis, and what that impact would look like on a 10-year, 15-year, or 20-year wage, and maybe that's something for Twyla to answer, if that's an easy thing to get done with a bookkeeper.
Well, that would be, that would be more, Andy and I, really, there's two solutions, as I see it. Either you move paras, food service, custodial, and clubhouse all forward, or you move custodial forward. I guess the third way to do it is to move just a portion of the scale for custodians forward. But I would play devil's advocate and say, the above and beyond phrase could be used for every single one of these groups.
Yeah.
And they would argue the same thing. I've been here for X years, and I go above and beyond, too.
I think, and I think that's accurate. I just think that it's, um, um, I think the custodians end up in this, in this, um, grouping, getting at kind of the, the worst end of the deal, right?
But the counterargument to that, again, to play devil's advocate, they were ahead for six years.
Yes.
Yeah.
I understand that.
So, again, this is a first reading, nothing has been decided. I can certainly bring back a couple of, well, options for you, if you will.
Well, and I guess that's why I'm bringing this up at this point, is that this is the reading, and it's, it still just leaves me kind of with a, and it's, I've thought about it since our meeting, and to have people that are in that position that have been here for, for 15 or 20 years, yes, they, they have been ahead. I hate to compare groups, and I think we talked about this at that meeting, um, the other night. I hate to compare groups, because you're comparing apples to watermelons, in essence. There's nobody that does the same job, and that's why they're different groupings. And to group them then together, and then comparing each other, and, which is, drives me crazy to begin with, that, I'd say, well, I'm not getting paid as much as a para, or I'm not getting paid as much as secretary, or whatever.
It's already happening, there's not much we can do about that.
I know.
This was sent out this afternoon, shortly after lunch, and the district office has already received, uh, conversation, comments about, "Why am I here?" and so-and-so is here.
Right.
So, that was literally within two hours, we had that.
And I'm, and I'm sure that did happen and I think that's why, I don't know, maybe grouping them like this is not a, not the ideal way to go about something like that. But I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what I wanna see here either, but I do wanna see some longevity, maybe in my opinion.
Well, remember, the scale when it was changed in two thousand eighteen had four, four levels, one, two, four and fifteen. So, now we have nine levels up through twenty-five years. So, I think longevity is spoken to in this scale already, unless I'm misunderstanding what longevity means.
I guess I hate, I'd just hate to see people that have been here like fifteen or twenty years getting a, I don't know.
I think the, the hard part with this is those people fifteen years, eighteen, twenty years, and they might get, you know, fifty cent, twenty-five cent or fifty cent an hour raise.
You could also move forward isolated folks, because we're not talking about dozens of people, because our custodial force isn't dozens of people.
Correct.
You're talking about two, three, four people at the most.
Correct.
So, you could also address just those individuals and leave well enough alone and the rest remains as is. Those are all, all their options. So, I will come back with some recommendations or some options with a recommendation and you guys can decide how you wanna go.
I think I'd like to see that.
I would almost like to see that. Yeah, where some of the people, you know, that small group of people, three, four, five people, whatever it is, that have been here a while, you know, I'd like to see them get more than, say, a quarter an hour raise.
And I, I think we talked about it that night too at the.
Yeah.
That we kind of.
Yeah, we did.
We only have X number of, you know, time to sit there and, and kinda talk about this before this kind of meeting to, to get this. And I, I appreciate the work that's been put into this. I just, I guess I'd like to see more.
And I will just follow up to say, you know, we do have conversations quite a bit. And I also want to, big picture wise, that the state didn't do us any favors by not having any new money to us this year or next year. So, we're kind of in a catch-22 with wanting to show gratitude to our staff and, and provide raises on a regular basis. But they kinda put us in a holding pattern for a year and then not knowing in the uncertainty what's gonna happen the next biennium. Like I said, we're, we've had same conversations between us and the office, you know, regarding what you're, what you're discussing. I think we can come, you know, come hopefully to a, to a good conclusion on it.
Okay, so what I, so then what I wanna know is then, is this mock-up the best that we can afford then or no?
For next year. We don't know what's happening after next year. No one does. I mean, the state has cho, or the, yes, the state has chosen to allow schools to be financed by federal dollars, which hasn't happened in the hundreds of years of, of, of the school system of Wisconsin, their, their existence. So, S R dollars is what's been used to fund schools for this year and for next year. What happens after next year? That's anyone's guess. I don't think you're gonna know anything until after midterm elections and you might not know even shortly thereafter. So, I was at a specific meeting of district administrators almost two weeks ago and the whole room, so we have no idea what's going on. What are most districts doing? They're doing CPI, which is Consumer Price Index, raise of four point seven six percent. Four point seven six percent is on the certified staff double increase. So, we did it over three years. Some systems are just doing it a year at a time and just doing the CPI and they're not putting any thought into it at all. So, this is what we can afford right now, but beyond that, I don't have a clue. I don't think anyone does. And the part that's disturbing to me, the state has a five point five billion dollar budget surplus. I'm not sure what they're hanging on to it for, other than politics, to be quite honest.
So, approving this, which we're not obviously looking at doing tonight, but if this is what we can afford going forward. So, we had the certified staff and salary schedule that we basically locked in for those three years. So, we looked at that, what's the, so what happens if, do we, can we just lock this in for a year or do we revisit it next year?
You can revisit it, absolutely, you can revisit it. This isn't locked in for perpetuity, no, that's not. None of the employee groups. I mean, I can speak to my own self. I've been frozen many years, but there hasn't been growth. And so, a certified staff and support staff.
Right.
And I would be a fan of it too, because I think you figure out we're not a for-profit organization. If we can reward our people year after year when we can, that's kinda how, how it works normally anyway. And like I said, not providing any new money for a year really stalled the, the situation, at least in our, our situation, so.
So, my aim would be to increase this and keep it increased. I can't predict anything beyond twenty-two, twenty-three, but nor can anyone else. And I, and I'm, I'm pretty certain that we will be able to do that and also we have to. Because if we're not going to increase this, we're not gonna hire anyone nor keep anyone. Because I think you folks all know that folks at that beginning wage can work in a lot of other places other than the school district of Amory. We want them to work here.
Right. I guess, yeah, we just have some really good people that I guess like to hang on to, but.
Well, the one thing I'm getting kind of the vibe from you two is the longevity pay. And you have that box down here in the corner. Maybe instead of playing with the matrix of the pay scale is there would be some compensation.
Sure, the longevity pay listed here is for bus driver, but you can also apply it to the other groups.
Do that in that area in essence.
And that's kind of what I was, yes, giving it.
Those people that we're talking about.
Yes, so that you're not sitting here at fifteen years, but getting, you know, sixty cents or a quarter or whatever raise. Because that, is there kind of a real kick in the shorts to those people? Like, what's your incentive to like, keep on staying here when you can, you know? I mean, again, if there's other reasons that you'd wanna work here.
Right, right.
But, yeah.
But I'm like, well, maybe that's the better thing to come back with is a, is a change in that longevity pay bonus at the end of the year.
As I said, I, I guess I'd just like to see other, however, that, because that's not my.
We've gone off-grid before. I mean, mechanic and IT, we've gone off the grid for both of those positions. We can go off-grid again for a couple of individuals. And we, when we've hired IT and mechanic, those are not competitive wages for a mechanic working in a, in outfit other than ours. They can make a lot more in other places.
Yeah.
The next, the, the next change, after all, the yellow on the salary scale is that clubhouse wage increase effective January one. That's sort of old news now. That's almost six months ago. The bus driver wage, if you go to the next page, you'll see that increase. The bus driver wage, if you'll notice right now, the daily rate is sixty-four dollars and forty-six cents. We have a very significant bus driver shortage nationwide. And here, I contend it's partly due to wage. So, now we have years of growth, because right now, you could have been driving bus in the school district of Amory for twenty years. You are making the exact same wage now as you did the first year you were here. And that's been the case for a long time. So, what we've done is added the same number of levels as we did for the other support staff groups. Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, all the way through forty-five. So, someone that has been here, to use your word longevity, they're rewarded for doing so. And then the mileage is thirty-five cents a mile. The average bus route length is about thirty-five miles, morning and afternoon. So, that's another about ten, twelve, thirteen dollars. So, your daily rate of pay for an entry level job would be eighty-seven dollars as the pose right now. You're in the upper seventies. By the time you get out to ten, fifteen, twenty years, you're making about twenty, twenty-five dollars more a day, hundred more a week, three, four hundred dollars more a month, so.
It's pretty significant.
This is a good thing. And this is competitive with our neighbors. So, we're seeking to not only be competitive, but perhaps look even better than they do. It's time. It hasn't happened for decades.
Right, yeah.
This is the suggestion for bus drivers. If you move further along under holidays, the district office doesn't have any idea why New Year's Day for support staff has been a half-day. I don't have a clue. So, half-day is now gone. And for me, the rule of thumb is if Twyla doesn't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. So, we don't know. So, a half-day is now, you get the whole day on New Year's Day, do your thing. And I have a couple more changes there at the end. Personal leave time. Employees are allowed to accumulate up to a hundred days. That's been stricken, because in the retirement language, you can accumulate more than that and get paid for that. So, we struck that out. And then lastly, and this is a bigger issue for support staff than it is for certified staff, because in support staff world, you get your day a month. Whereas certified staff, you get your days upfront at the beginning of the year. So, employees who are out of personal leave time and do not come to work will be subject to termination unless formally granted leave without pay through the district. This is coming, becoming sort of epidemic in the school district of Amory, that folks that are out of days are simply not coming to work. And they know you can't replace them, so then unconcerned with the fact that they're going to be fired, because they can't be replaced, because we can't find anyone to replace them with. And they're not coming to work. And it's the same half dozen or so folks that are doing it fairly frequently. So, this increase in pay in combination with this language would add more teeth to they're not coming to work when they're supposed to be here. And that is the last change.
I think there was some discussion of the paras.
Yes.
Having two in-service days.
Yes, I remember that.
Any thought on that or any change on that?
I focused on the, the wage-related stuff the most. That's the biggest tickets in my mind. And once we get that where it needs to be, then I think we look at the other language changes. That's been my approach, but I can certainly bring back a suggestion in regards to how to deal with that if you like.
I guess, I, I, well, you know, we talked about updating the roles and responsibilities, the hand, the handbooks and then job descriptions as well.
Yes.
So, I think probably looking at those two items or those days, once we kinda get that all under control and summed up, would probably be a better time to look at those.
That's a summer job for district office to firm that up.
Yeah, so I think maybe we go back and revisit that. I just wanna make sure that we get, that we discuss everything that we've talked about.
Absolutely.
At that meeting to make sure that people don't feel unheard or left out.
There was conversations about that with the paras.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we should keep it on the radar screen.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions for any of the documents?
So, our certified staff handbook, I see we have that in our pile too. Does that just the same name, language or name changes?
The support staff is just name changes. And we'll, we don't know that first bunch of stuff until May.
Yeah.
I have to say, we've done half dozen or so this year, maybe a few last four or five sessions, working with the advisory committee that is certified staff and then the advisory committee that is support staff. They have been wonderful to work with. They've had excellent ideas. We have a good dialogue going on. My two rules of thumb have always been, we need to treat you fairly inequitably, but we also have to balance the budget. They get it, I get it. We haven't always agreed, that's fine. That's sometimes that's where the best answers are, somewhere between. But they've been great to work with and I value that relationship very much. So, we'll continue to do that when we get back on into the fall.
I think it's been a, one of the highlights for me, being on the board, is to do this, sit down with staff. It's just a better insight into what they value, what they see, the day-to-day things that happen. It's, it's been a great experience for me. It's been a, you know, how that affects our budget and it kinda brings everything together, sitting here and then being able to come back and talk about those things is a big part of a, of the board is a, it's been a, it's been a really rewarding experience. Not like the old days where you guys have had to sit on one side of the table or the other, right?
And a few of those members are here, yes. No, it's good to share, you know, have, have good conversation and share ideas, because we don't necessarily know your thoughts and you might not know our thoughts. And so, it's, it's just a good annual event, I think, so.
Yeah, I've enjoyed it. It's been a good experience for me, so.
Good. Well, we'll come back with that and look at the other options. Next up is the staff retirement celebration.
We are at that time of year. Staff retirement celebration is on Wednesday, May eighteenth. We are out at the golf course. We have seven retirees, some support staff, some certified staff. So, that date is out there. It's on the calendar, reserved and all the rest of it. So, I would encourage you to attend if you want to. It's a nice night to recognize some awful good people.
Yes.
So, get it on your calendar. We, we promise not to roast Cheryl, but Tom is not allowed to speak.
Oh, no, he's, he gets the microphone.
I don't, I don't think that would be a good idea.
Late in the night, that's the best, right?
That would even be a worse idea.
All right. Ah, next we will skip to the action item of the school nutrition equipment purchases.
He's been waiting patiently.
Well, good evening, everybody. This is kind of a, I know I was just here, what, two months ago, February? So, this is kinda just the follow-up to that conversation. So, obviously, when we were here the last time, I kind of highlighted four specific points that are really starting to fail. First one is gonna be several of the convection ovens throughout the district. Two at the high school, one at the intermediate school have unfortunately met their untimely demise. And by untimely, I mean the youngest one was twenty-three years old. So, I think we've gotten our seven thousand dollars out of use out of those. And if you have questions on if they are indeed broken, I will show you the burns on my arms to prove it. So, the other two things is we have one steam kettle that yes, is original to the elementary school building and one that is original to the high school building. Both of those are essentially just ticking time bombs. And I'm not sure if you know what makes up a steam kettle, but it's an exterior pressure chamber. So, they're literally pipe bombs. So, and then the third item would just be general prep counters, prep space, which is another just kind of concerning point. So, if we go to the next slide, these are the five pieces of equipment that are currently either dying or have been deceased. Unfortunately, that's just kind of where we're at. So, the next kind of subsequent slides here, these are kind of the three bid purchases that, or three bids that I have received. One, if you look, is from Belther Landmark, that is a company out of Minnesota that wholesales restaurant equipment. The other two are actually online sources, but I was able to get a one-for-one bid equivalent. And you'll notice that, that's not a typo. That center bid from K T O M Restaurant Equipment is twice as high as the rest. So, what we're looking at is a total of, or eight thousand dollars and nineteen cents, or eight thousand and nineteen dollars per new double stack oven for a grand total of twenty-four thousand and fifty-seven dollars from the district. The other component to this is the steam kettles. The steam kettles, again, I'm not sure if you guys have ever really seen the majority of the wonderful lunch ladies who work here, but Amy Corbett in the elementary school is no more than five foot two. The steam kettle that is in there currently is four foot ten. So, seeing her with her legs in the air cleaning it is never a fun thing. The other component is that currently, and I think I brought this up at my board report, currently, we do not have a good means in which to cook raw proteins in the district. That was sold off many, many years ago. So, we have not been in the cooking business, we've been in the reheating business. So, instead of replacing a steam kettle with a steam kettle, we're limiting your ability to do things. I would like to replace steam kettles with things that we can actually cook things on. So, instead of reheating, we become a cooking kitchen again. Currently, we really only have two, two steam kettles that would justify being replaced at this point. So, this is gonna be the bid for that, as you can see, again, based off of my recommendation. These are not cheap, they're twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars a piece. Steam kettles are about fourteen hundred bucks cheaper. So, they're not, it's not five grand versus twenty-three grand. They're quite a bit more. The last one is just adding additional counter space to the high school kitchen. I know this is gonna become a very big surprise, maybe not to Josh, but high school kids eat and they eat a lot. And creating food for them takes a lot of space. And the high school kitchen unfortunately does not have a lot of counter space. So, this right here, and if you're reading the three bids and you're looking for apples to apples, it's hard to find a custom-made table online or through somebody else. And right now, the three biggest stainless steel players in the restaurant equipment game are not accepting new orders at this time because of a shortage of stainless steel. So, my recommendation is there for that last piece there. And if we go to the last side, slide, this'll just show the overall impact based off of the three bids financially speaking. So, what we're looking at for five, or six total new pieces of equipment is seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents. So, that's delivered installed.
And I would like to follow up just a little bit about, you know, how Fund Fifty is a separate account from our general operating account. They've always been very fiscally responsible and actually added their fund balance every year. To the point that we got noticed by the ever-powerful Oz known as D. every year, to the point that we got noticed by the ever-powerful Oz, known as DPI, and sent us a letter saying we need to have a plan to spend down, so this kind of coincides with a good time to purchase this equipment, because we do need to spend down our fund balance to a level that they consider to be the level they wanted at, so.
And DPI, in, the letter stated five categories in which you can spend that down, four out of five we are already currently doing, because we are getting increased, increased reimbursement per student, because we are currently free throughout the rest of the school year. So, offering better quality food to children is something that we're currently doing, for instance.
And primarily, what puts us over the top is that we were, or why we added different balances, because we are selling a lot of à la carte and things beyond the normal lunch that is free. So as you can see, that's probably why we added quite a bit, and we do use more catering and things too, and things go into that. But very successful program, and it has for years, and it's continued under John, and, and that's a great thing, if you ask me.
So would all of this money come out of that fund?
Yes, correct.
Yep.
And it's probably worth mentioning that this $73,000 is going to replace stuff that's 40 to 50 plus years old.
The, there is not a single piece on here that is less than two decades old. The vast majority, I think the average age when I did the actual calculation was like 32.
So that, that 23-year-old item is probably the youngest.
Correct, yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, in commercial kitchens, you know, you're usually, you're usually replacing equipment every 10 years, you're doing a full turn of your equipment. Now, what we have that restaurants don't have is we have an incredibly dedicated staff of people who clean, and they clean.
I'm in my fifth year, and I think the only thing that we've purchased since I've been sitting is a combi oven.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
See, for five years, that's it, so, okay.
Good.
Well, I'm excited to see these, especially the new tilt skilllets, those sound really great, and so I will make a motion that we approve this purchase.
I'd second that, if you are going to cook us something, and bring it.
He will.
I know.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Shar can supply the beef for the...
I would happily supply, yeah, supply the burger, yeah, I would, yeah. Steak, I, okay. Hey, I don't know, I'm just saying, don't leave it to the fat girl, because she's got You've got the beef.
Moving on. We need to authorize a resolution to sell our academy house.
It is that time of year, we are nearing completion of the home. Josh, Josh Gange and I have met a couple of times, we have a prospective buyer, we have a Realtor that we're working with, she is working with one of our local banks, so we are all lined up, we simply need a resolution to enter into sale, and that would then be posted as a sale after July 1. And we would be finished with house number four, because we have two over behind Slumberland and two on Hillcrest. So, it's been a very successful endeavor, so we would need a motion to approve that resolution.
Move to approve the resolution, authorizing sale of the school house number four.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no?
And will there be an open house or something again?
Once we get her fully done, yes.
We'd love to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so exciting.
Review our COVID plan.
Okay. We've been doing this since, well, since September, and then some, in regards to COVID. We had a little bit of an uptick here recently, as you'll see in the numbers, the week of April 2nd through the 8th, we had, in district, we had, what's that, 14 total cases, and then last week, we were back down to two. I, I don't really have any idea why that happened, but it did, and it didn't change anything, other than for those 14 individuals that had to deal with that, but our numbers have been down, and nothing's changed in regards to the matrix, so there really isn't anything to report, unless you have questions or comments that you wanted to make.
I'm thankful it's been better.
Yes.
Sorry to say a little spike, but.
You'll see.
But no, no shortages in teachers or...
Not for that reason. We've had, you know, we don't have as big of a sub pool, we've had days where it's been out towards 15, 16, 17 people gone, but more likely it's 10, 12, for other reasons, just normal reasons people are gone.
Yep.
It's busy.
No action needed?
Nope.
Okay, here we go. Next is up the school board election results.
Okay.
So, we have...
Nope, we missed donations.
Donations, right.
Let's do that one, and then we'll get that.
We have Village Pizzeria.
Yes, The Village Pizzeria kindly donated the popcorn machine for the intermediate school to use.
I don't have to keep rolling it over from the middle school? That'd be so nice.
Unless you want to.
The little things in life, isn't it?
I know.
That's our only donation this month, so you'll need to make a motion to...
Thank you to the pizzeria. I will make a motion to accept that.
Well, that should be that, second.
Shar's second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. And thank you so much.
Especially from Aaron.
I make the popcorn for open house before, you know, for the intermediate school open house, and so, it's like going to get the popcorn machine and rolling it over, clunk, clunk, hoping nothing falls off.
Now I'm wondering how many people are going to be disappointed they go into the pizzeria that took the popcorn machine.
All right. Well, now we'll go on to our school board election results.
You'll see on the screen, the four candidates, and then write-ins by municipality. Again, there are nine municipalities in Polk County, three municipalities in St. Croix County, so for those who were playing along at home, you had to track the results in both. And again, Cylon Deer Park reported their results together, since that's the same spot for both of those municipalities to vote, so they just called it in as such, and therefore you see a dash line through Deer Park, they're simply on the line above it. So you'll see the results there, Dale had 1,292, Joe Vierkant had 1,285, Chelsea Whitley had 1,255, and Stephanie Janson had 1150, and then there were write-ins and scatterings across our municipalities of a total of 13. So, we have a new board member, Joe Vierkant is here with us this evening, and we need to do an oath of office, and then a notary republic thereafter, so I'm not sure how we want to do it. Perhaps Joe up to the mic?
Why don't we let Dale do it first, so you see how it's done?
Okay. All right, we can do that.
There you go.
And how is that? Do we got?
Read.
I, Dale Johnson, who have been duly elected to the Board of Education of the School District of Amory, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
That's it. And Joe?
Come up.
Joe, you get to come to the podium.
I, Joseph Vierkant, who have been duly elected to the Board of Education of the School District of Amory, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Perfect. There we go, just, we should do that. Welcome. All right. And we only got one last thing.
And before we move on to that last thing, I would like to thank Chelsea for her nine years of service to the School District of Amory, three times elected, nine years total. I, I was said in close session, I can't believe where'd that time go. So, thank you very much, Chelsea.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership as president for those, some of those years, too. Yes, enjoy.
And I appreciate that when I was elected onto the board, you were the first person to reach out to me, and welcome me, and been very supportive of showing me how to do things here, and how things have been, and we've valued your legal expertise in getting us through some, some pretty tough times that, to let us in the kind of no-second steps of also conferring with our attorneys, and we've appreciated the leadership that you've provided in that role.
Thanks.
And being a delegate.
Yeah, and being the delegate.
And I, I just want to say a few things. I would like to congratulate Joe Vierkant and wish him the best of luck in his new position. I will continue my personal commitment to the School District of Amory and to the best interests of the students, staff, and community, and my hope is that the school board will continue to move forward together. It's been a pleasure serving on the board for the past nine years, making difficult decisions through all the trials and tribulations, and I thank the community for supporting me for the past nine years. Thank you.
Thanks, Chelsea.
Thank you, again. Yes. Our last item?
Is personnel, yes.
Personnel.
We have new employee and athletic contracts for Haley DeLeone in Family and Consumer Science at the middle school, Nicholas Stewart, English teacher, high school, reassignments, all folks moving from one position to the other in district, Jennifer Kennedy moving from PBL teacher to Montessori teacher, Grant Miller from kindergarten to Montessori, and resignations for Charissa Bodnas at the high school for math, Carolyn Erickson as a speech and language pathologist, and Paula Stevens for dance team coach, will need a, a motion to accept those personnel items.
Are those resignations, well, besides the dance team, like, effective at the end of the year?
End of year.
They're finishing the year.
Do we have a motion?
It's unlocked.
Aaron?
Yep.
And a second.
Second.
Shar. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no? And so we don't need a close session, so I have a look for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn. One final time.
There we go, a second. Dale, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you.